So I am opening the July 16, 2019 meeting of the Islaan Meadow Planning Board. Present are John Torchia, Lou Morbido, George Kingston, Ty Richards, and myself, Russell Denver. Pursuant to Master General Law, I need to announce that we are recording this meeting for the minutes and that Elcat is recording the video of the meeting. If there's anyone else recording the meeting, please identify yourself and your organization. Hearing none. I'd like to deal with the approval of the minutes. So if people had an opportunity to review the minutes, then do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, that passes. So Mr. Clerk, would you please call the first order of business, please?
I would love to. SPRW 2019-21 Berkshire Facial Surgery, request by applicant for site plan waiver for an outpatient medical clinic business at 265B Benton Drive, Assessors Parcel ID 10-3-101, located on 13.17 plus or minus acres in the industrial garden park zoning district. The applicant is Berkshire Facial Surgery, Inc., 53 Southampton Road, West of Fjord, Mass.
Is there anyone from the applicant here to ready to address it? Please come forward.
Connie.
Can you tell us who you are?
I'm Ryan Grandal. I'm with Associated Builders. And we're representing Jeff Eli, the building owner. So we are here filing that plan review waiver.
So just tell us about the project.
So again, they're an outpatient medical facility, dental office, and they're occupying about 6,380 square feet of that space of a 13,020 square foot building. And they're looking for their license to operate a business.
Does anybody on the board have any questions for this applicant?
No, they approved their site plan originally for the building, so.
Correct. The last time we were here, the building hadn't even been, hadn't even been, we didn't even start breaking ground yet, so I don't know if you guys have had a chance to see it.
Went amazingly fast, yeah.
These guys did an awesome job. They really did. So hopefully, we're looking to get in CO by the middle of September.
Connie, anything we need to be aware of?
No.
Do you make a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Nay. Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And again, I told you guys before, being on the school committee in Wilbraham, thank you so much for volunteering to do this. So thank you. Have a good night.
Item two.
Okay. Site plan review waiver, 2019-22 Hair Salon, request by applicant for site plan waiver for a hair salon at 225 Shaker Road, Assessors Parcel ID 18-5-0, located on .3 plus or minus acre site in the industrial zoning district. The applicant is Jennifer Guppiaro, 17, sorry about that if you're here, 17 Rethino Road, Islaan Meadow, Mass.
Is anyone from the applicant here?
She emailed me. I think she's on vacation this week.
Well, this is a pleasure of the board.
Well, it's in a commercial building on Shaker Road.
Yep.
Okay. Yep. It's a hair salon.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Okay. We have a motion that's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So that passes. Item three.
Site plan review waiver, 2019-23 Home Office for Car Hauler Business, request by applicant for site plan review waiver for a home office at 34 Ann Street, Assessors Parcel ID 24-28-23, located on .2 plus or minus acres in a residential zoning district. The applicant is Yossi Fennemo, 34 Ann Street, Islaan Meadow, Mass.
Is anyone from the applicant here? So I've been made aware of that this, the request is, he is a car hauler and has a car hauling piece of equipment, so a large vehicle. And there is no evidence, so he puts on his application that there is a commercial vehicle. So I don't know whether we want to delay this until he or she is available so that we can discuss what the rules are for.
Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is wait until the applicant's here so we can ask him what's going on with the hauler.
Can we speak on it?
Sure.
Sure.
Sorry. Sorry about it. I'm flustered.
I'm a neighbor right across the street from him. And this is what we're up against. He's hauling, he's hauling cars. I don't know where he's hauling to. And this is what I see. One second. This is what I see. This is what I see from front of my house. And he's got a big vehicle like that, okay? And it shouldn't be in this residential home, you know, residential. This should be in business zone only. He's taking up the whole area here. And it's a safety hazard. People can't come down, especially fire, ambulances, something like that. Now he's parking on top of his lawn to make the road wider. And I'm totally in the pulse of that thing. So you people.
Is he parking there overnight?
Parking?
He parks it there overnight?
Yes.
Okay.
For weeks at a time.
How long has he had it?
Oh, this has been going on what?
It hasn't been.
Just one person at a time. Just one person at a time would be good.
Through the chair, this ought to be brought to the attention of the zoning enforcement officer?
So the building inspector is the zoning enforcement officer. That's against the zoning laws.
Well, we've been through these people, and they're waiting. I don't know what's going on.
So if the, if the building inspector has been out there and has, you know, issued a citation, the individual has so many days to remove that violation.
Okay. Now, would you approve a business in this house?
So you can have a home-based business.
Correct.
And that vehicle, if it's a commercial vehicle, would have to be shielded from the street.
Right. Another one's parked on the side of his house, or what?
Well, it needs to be either a fence or shrubbery. It would not be seen from the street.
Or a garage.
Or a garage. And parking of a commercial vehicle on the street is no longer legal in Islaan Meadow as well.
Okay.
So a call to the police department might be appropriate as well.
Done that.
But we're going to delay this because he, because he's not here.
Well, he should be here. That's the story.
He should, but he's not here.
Well, you people right now, if you had a house and you see this, you definitely want to, you do something about it. Because he's knocking down my real estate.
Yep.
You know, I, you know, what happens if you approve him and the next-door neighbor gets another one? Another trailer, another trailer. What happens then?
So under the zoning regulations, if those commercial vehicles are shielded from view, right now, it's allowed under the zoning laws.
Well, something has to be done. You have to change the zoning laws. You people are the ones that changed it, right?
No, it would come through us and we would make our recommendation to the town.
Well, this is what you have to do.
Yeah.
Because this is no good. This is, you know, I don't mind people going off and visiting, but this is getting ridiculous.
So just for your, just for your information, so a group of, let's say, residents brought this issue to us, I believe in January, February of this year. They wanted to do away with the requirement to shield commercial vehicles from sight. And we did not agree with that proposal. And the town council took action to also not change the bylaw as well. So there's support there.
Okay. I'll stay on top of it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
So we do have a motion to continue.
To take.
Do you want to continue to the next planning board meeting?
No. The second meeting.
Yes. I'm going to make a motion to table this because it's not a hearing.
Okay.
So we're not continuing it. We're tabling it until.
But it would be nice to state that you're going to.
To the next, to the next, to the meeting, second meeting in August.
Okay.
When you table something, it gets lost.
Yeah.
So we'd like to be able to have continuity.
I'll change it to continue then.
That sounds wonderful.
Make a motion to continue.
Okay.
And through the chair.
Sure.
We need to, somebody needs to contact the applicant and let him know that.
I sent them an email, but I don't know if it's the right email.
Yeah.
We both, cars communicated with the parties, and we asked that they be present and bring photographs of the vehicle this evening. So they were aware that they had some details that they had to address at this evening's meeting.
Sure. So we have a motion to continue. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
So we have a motion to continue. It's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So motion passes. Item four.
Okay. Site, 2019-05 Proposed Commercial Development for Shaker Road, request by applicant for construction of a 2,500 square foot plus or minus bank and a 5,500 plus or minus square foot commercial building at 244 Shakers Road, Assessors Parcel 18-35-0 on 133,217, 17,000 square foot site in a residential A business zoning district. Applicant is SIVAD Development Partners, LP, One Marick Place Suite 1300 Springfield, Mass, continued from April 16, 2019, and June 18, 2019.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So why don't you kind of bring us up to date since the last meeting?
Okay. First of all, for the record, I'm Jim Martin from Robinson Donovan. On behalf of the applicant, Rob Lebec from R. Lebec Associates, who is the engineer on this project. So from a background standpoint, since the last meeting, we've had a visit to the site with a representative of the DPW. And as a result of that, we've actually had two visits. As a result of that, a revision to the plan was made with regard to the water retention, which has been filed. And then we've been to the Conservation Commission prior to that meeting. The members of the Conservation Commission who had not been able to do the site visit before the prior Conservation Commission meeting went out to the site. We had a hearing last week on that. We unfortunately hit a scheduling sort of perfect storm where Tom left for vacation just subsequent to the filing of the revised plan, which Rob will explain the details of. And the other gentleman in the DPW was already on vacation. So we had a good discussion about that, but we wanted to get the comments back from Tom Christensen before, for the Conservation Commission. So that's been pushed to the next Conservation Commission meeting. I will represent, I think we've addressed all of their concerns, but that'll be up to Tom to say that they're satisfactory and for the board to make the decision, but they seem to be satisfied. The plan calls for an additional water retention system that will keep most of the water from having to go into the public system. Tom was very fair in saying, given the history of the site, he could not require this, but he requested it. I took it back to the developer, and while it is a significant additional expense, the developer said that they would cooperate with the request. And therefore, Rob and his team, Philippe, as a lead designer, redesigned the system. There have also been some exchange of information with Rob, correcting some issues with the traffic study in terms of pages that you pointed out at the first hearing and addressing some other concerns. So that's kind of a mini background. I hope that's helpful. And then Rob can.
Great. If it pleases the board, I can show you on the phone real quick where we're at. So again, for the record, Rob Lebec from R. Lebec Associates. The site plan shows Shaker Road here. We basically have two site development projects here. And one, where we have the bank on the corner, we have the proposed commercial building right here. What we've been requested to do was to reduce the water that's coming off of the property that currently goes into a storm drain in Shaker. So very specifically, there's a catch basin that takes the water from a vitrified clay pipe that runs into the backside of this catch basin. It's an old clay pipe that was basically put there years ago, was somewhat crushed and some damaged at one point. And we feel that most likely what happened is a lot of this wetland that was created here was, was a result of that, you know, that pipe being impacted. That said, it's here now. We're dealing with it. We now have filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, obviously the site plan approval application with your board. And as part of that review process, Tom Christensen from DPW has requested that we try to reduce or, if possible, eliminate the water that's coming from the site. After the site visit with Tom, we explained to Tom that we can't eliminate it. Obviously, there's an existing wetland here. But we have increased our drainage system at his request, as Attorney Martin has mentioned, to include a subsurface detention system. So this is not an infiltration system because we don't have the soils or the characteristics in the ground that we need to infiltrate. So what we've done is we've located, on each of these sites, we've located, these rectangles that you see here are subsurface detention chambers. And what they'll do is when this system fills up the basin, they'll actually surcharge back up the drainage pipe to that subsurface system, and it creates more volume. So we're basically, if you think of these two rectangles as increasing the size of the stormwater basin is really what we're doing. And that helps us accommodate more water. And the calculations that we provided to DPW show that we're, you know, we're drastically reducing the water that's coming to their line there. So with that, I do not want to speak for DPW because they haven't done a formal review, but we, there was a discussion on site. The game plan was, come up with, we kind of sketched it out on site, Philippe put that together. That's been provided to them with the stormwater analysis, and that's where we are, pending with them. Some vacations are currently happening. So we would hope to be, by the next meeting, have been through that DPW review. In addition, just to bring you up to speed with the conservation, we submitted a notice of intent, as I mentioned. That notice of intent is pending that same review. I believe their next meeting is next week, is that correct?
July 24.
I'm sorry, July 24, at which time we anticipate that we should have that review back, but I don't know. I think you had mentioned that Tom's back at a certain time, and I don't know whether or not Mr. Finney is, you know, comfortable with that review. I'm not sure. I don't know if you know that. So with that, we're working towards an end here, but we have some, some stuff to continue to review with them. We believe that based on the site visit with the Conservation Commission, they're comfortable with the impacts we have to the vegetation in the buffer zone, to those bordering vegetated wetlands that we're dealing with. So there was two other items I think were discussed. One was the, it was an elevation for the building, just to understand what the buildings were going to look like. This is on spec right now, so we, whatever we were to come up with would be arguably, you know, we would shake our crystal ball, and hopefully, we'd come up with something fairly close. We would anticipate this would be a New England-style-looking bank building. If there was a condition, I guess we could, you know, if you wanted to see the building that does end up going here before it came, you know, before it got built, I guess that's something that could be, could be done. But right now, we don't know what's going here, so we haven't provided that.
It is planned for a one-story bank building.
Right.
Traditional design.
And there was one other comment related to sidewalks, and I believe that was discussed with Tom Christensen on site as well. And I don't believe that that was something they wanted to pursue. Is that accurate?
So does the placement of the building impact conservation issues?
Absolutely.
So if I could just interrupt. So many smaller, or many New England communities now are moving the buildings closer to the street, parking to the rear of the building.
Yep.
So if you were to change, because it looks like if it's the darkened area on the right-hand side, so the right, no, the other.
The retail building.
So if you were to move that to the, more closer to the street with parking to the rear, would that impact any of the calculations for the Conservation Commission?
So the buffer zone would arguably be impacted as well. The buffer zone is right here, touched through the site, so it would still be impacting buffer zone. And our proximity to the wetland, I believe, on this side wasn't a concern. It was really more so back here on this site where we had, we're in close proximity to that. There was a comment from DEP, Mass DEP, in their file number comment that we got, specific to the canopy. Actually, there's really no canopy there. There's an old, we'll call it a slab from an old structure, as well as some clearing that had happened. So this, this bordering vegetated wetland has basically popped up in an area that doesn't really have any canopy. The canopy is really on this side and some back here behind this proposed building. So I think to answer the question, it would still be impacting buffer zone. So we're not overly, we're confident that we're meeting the performance standards, I believe the commission is too, without speaking for them. But I know that this, when, speaking to Mr. Gertrude Strum, is that how I say it? Gertrude Strum? Greg?
Gertrude.
My Gertrude Strum. This was the area that they were concerned with. And we really can't play too much with this because then we would not have access to the driveway, uh, drive-through.
But at least for the, for the other building, you might want to give some consideration. A number of years ago, I was on a zoning rewrite for the city of Springfield's zoning bylaws, and there was an effort made to move buildings closer to the sidewalk. And the visibility for cars going by was more pleasant than just driving by and seeing, you know, parking areas. So that if you were going to go to the New England style, that might fit better as well.
When I guess when I'm saying the New England style, I think we're thinking more about the structures. The site itself, I think you're speaking of kind of a new urbanism feel where the buildings would be in the front and parking in the back. We've done that a number of times as well. Typically, the convenient-style retailers don't want it around the back just because it's not, it's not as functional for them. They also have to control entrances on the front of the building and the back of the building, which is not, not a good, for, you know.
Security purposes.
Yeah, security purposes. But, you know, it, so I think this is, from a functional point of view, going back to the layout, this is pretty convenient to get in and to get out.
Mr. Chairman, if, just in concept, if, you know, given the slope, the other thing, we briefly touched on, but not contemplating your point, was the further you move it to the street, the more it's seen out. So we thought that if we kept it back, you would put.
Got tucked into the slope a little bit. Cutting that back slope a little bit.
Good point.
Anybody, board members have any questions?
Last time when we talked, but is there going to be any, like, vegetation or fencing to kind of separate the houses that'll be there with the bank and the, especially the retail shop?
Yeah, absolutely. Sorry, I left that out. We are planning on plantings in the front, but I think most importantly, we do have plantings in the back for screening. Right now, if you're familiar with the site, there's a, a house that was built behind it. And they've been using that driveway through here as access. It's a blue structure, a blue house. I think they just put the siding on. So there's a gap there that's really voided vegetation where the driveway comes through, but on either side is pretty, pretty good right now. I'm sure in the winter months, it's not as thick. So we're planning on planting evergreens along the back here, which will be up on the slope. And then we're kind of cutting the site down a little bit in the back to accommodate the building. It'll kind of create a swale. So if you were to envision from the side of the building, the building will kind of be tucked in, and then the plantings will be on the slope itself.
On the Shaker roadside, though, the plantings have to be more aesthetic for safety purposes for people coming in and out. You can't screen the building and have traffic safety that way.
And so the sidewalks, so there is, I missed the part about, you guys mentioned sidewalks. Were they, are you unable to put them in because of that, or was there?
There's a couple reasons from a design standpoint that we would not recommend them. They would have to go right on the edge. If that was something that the town wanted to do at some point, I guess it could be looked at. I think there was a discussion on site.
There was.
Is that accurate? And I was not on that, at that meeting, so.
I'm comfortable saying, although you can ask Mr. Christensen, he did not endorse that recommendation for a lot of reasons, including safety.
And there is a, Mr. Torchia, there is a grade change from the site itself down, so there's, there's a fairly significant grade change at that, at that corner. If you envision looking up.
So it won't be certainly leveled a little.
Correct.
The chairman, if I may. So I had a conversation with Tom Christensen, and he didn't seem to be in his favor of sidewalks at this site. So I think maybe we have to have some written comments from DPW regarding any sidewalk installation.
Yeah, we're hoping he addresses that when he gets back.
I just don't want you to think.
No, I don't have anything yet.
You mentioned traffic.
Yes, sir.
Can you comment on comments you may or may not have gotten from police or DPW about the exit onto Chestnut Street?
I'm not, Connie, if you could maybe help me, I'm not aware of any comments from them. Did I get any, did we get any comments from them?
From the exit, regarding the exit, the, the ingress egress? No, but we had some preliminary department's discussion because there was some concern about the hill and the sightline on the hill. And knowing the crest and knowing that it is, the crest of the hill is, meets the sightline distance, but.
You mean the crest of the hill way back?
Yeah, because there has been a fatal accident close to that intersection over the course of history. So we want to prevent any accident from occurring again. I don't know. So we were, again, amongst the department staff, just deliberating about the ingress egress, perhaps making a right-hand turn and avoid that left-hand turn heading west on Chestnut Street down the hill, but just encouraging the traffic to go up the hill, which isn't as convenient as being able to take a right or a left once you come out of the driveway. But again, for public safety reasons.
In my review.
But to answer your question, we have not yet received any comments.
I don't believe we've received comments. We can certainly look at that. We'll have time before the next meeting. And I don't believe I've seen a concern raised in the traffic analysis, but I'll double-check with the traffic engineer, Paul Virgil, from McManus Associates.
So there's several crests coming down.
I know, yes.
There's at the very top.
Where the blinking light is, Mr. Finney?
Yes. And then as you come down, there's another.
There is.
You know, crest to there. And then the entrance to that site is very close.
It was, it was sort of addressed in the traffic engineer's report, but it wasn't expressly, you know, directly.
Yeah, I would love to hear something from police and DPW, actually.
Sure.
And see what could be done to resolve that.
Okay. So we'll reach out to them right away.
If I may, Chairman, there is a sign as you come down the hill that says there's going to be a traffic light ahead, and you can't see the traffic light from there, which is why the sign is there. Okay, with blinking lights. Supposed to light up when light is red, but it doesn't anymore. But the point being that people do come down there fairly rapidly. So 30 mile an hour limit, I know. But, so making a left turn there, or when traffic is backed up, trying to make a left turn is, could be an issue that, I'm just hoping that we, it's been looked at and.
It has. It's in our, it's in, I do have a copy of the traffic report. It's probably best that I review that again with the traffic engineer to make sure that the specific question that we're raising is answered. And then we'll communicate with the department heads.
And last, Joe, sure. Could we get a copy of that?
We do have it.
It's been filed, yes.
We have it.
All right. Well, I can certainly email it if that's more convenient.
No, I'll get it.
Thanks.
Okay. There were a couple, from the last time, there were a couple pages replaced. I think those were circulated as well, so if you, you'd have to get those changes.
I'm going to wait for comments from DPW and the other agencies. My big concern is the entrance on Chestnut. You know, being on a hill, it's difficult, particularly, you know, when it's cold out, snowy weather, things like that. But we'll see what, you know, DPW recommends, and we'll go from there.
So it's, obviously, we need to continue this.
Yes, sir.
Why don't we need to open it to the public first?
Oh, excuse me, thank you. I'm so glad you're still here.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, so is there anyone here who wishes to address the board on this issue? Please come forward.
Yes. Hi, good evening. Marilyn Richards, 342 Pinehurst. Are there sidewalks in the front of this building?
No.
No.
No. Can I ask why?
I'm sorry, I.
She asked if there were sidewalks.
On Shaker?
Right, from, from Yorkshire down to.
There are no existing sidewalks.
All right, I brought this up at a previous public hearing when we were discussing Dunkin' Donuts. Now we're talking about some commercial buildings, a potential bank, which we don't have a rendering for yet, but I would like to strongly suggest, the planning board's been burned before by not looking at a rendering for a proposal that went before us when I was on the board, and I'm still disappointed that we didn't do it. It's important to see what it's going to look like. But as far as the sidewalk, depending on what the use is, there is a whole development of families and children that live within close proximity to this development. And if, if there's any kind of a convenience store, or any kind of a coffee shop, or it's going to be a magnet, and these kids are going to come down, they will. And my feeling is there needs to be safe access to the parcel from Yorkshire to the corner.
Thank you.
Also, in the proposal that you submitted to your proposed bylaw, which has nothing to do with this, you mentioned that the planning board is functioning as the design review committee in that particular bylaw. We have a design review that has some wonderful things in it, and I, you know, I think that those conditions or concerns should be reflected in the look of these buildings, because they're brand-new buildings, and the design review was created for that purpose, to study and appreciate, you know, the look and feel of what the building's going to look like. So I'd like to see a rendering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak on this issue?
I can say that, as, if I may.
Sure.
As Rob pointed out, you know, every brand of bank has their own sort of different look. I don't think if we get to that point that we would have a problem coming in and saying it's going to be this style bank for this, or this style bank for that, and bring it back for that. But, you know, I think it would be unfair to everyone if we said, okay, here's what it's going to look like, and, you know, anticipating it was going to be like a neutral square bank, and, you know, one of the banks that might be interested in this parcel comes in and says, you know, we have this consistent design throughout. So that's one thing. With respect to sidewalks, again, I agree, we'll wait for Mr. Christensen to get back. Graywoods, I believe the main entrance there going up off, the first one into the phase two does not have sidewalks coming down the hill, and there are no sidewalks going south on Shaker. So that's one of the things we discussed, was that not only the grade, not only that they'd be too close to the street for, at least as Tom expressed to me, but also that it'd be just like an island of sidewalk. And then you'd be having people, you know, these are going to be grade level entries into the shopping centers, and the sidewalks would be there.
Does anybody happen to know if there's sidewalk from the bike path, like, and then on that side along the new gas station, or does it?
There is not, on either side. There's no, there's no sidewalks on the opposite side, and there's no sidewalks in front of the Shell Station.
Can I ask a question through the chair?
Sure.
About design review? Because I know that there is some language in the zoning regs, and in the past, your predecessor had mentioned that it started, but then it was not part of it. What did you know the current status?
So we are talking about bringing back a design review committee.
Okay.
So we've had discussions at this board level about doing that, and it's one of our goals this year.
Okay.
To bring this back. So thank you for agreeing to come back and showing us the design before.
Is that something that you would envision could be contin, I'm sorry, conditioned in a permit, that, you know, you know, the site plan was approved subject to design review?
So, I mean, through the chair, so how I would draft the decision, it would be the elevation drawings were subject to final review by the planning board, simple as that.
Great. I think that would be, we'd love to show you, we just don't know.
Sure.
You know, and if it's one bank or the other, it could be very different.
So does anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak on this issue?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I understand the applicant is highly suggesting that this is going to be a bank. If they can't find a bank to do it, they're gonna either rent it, sell it, or whatever, to a business that will move in. That's just the name of the game. We have many banks that were in town that are now a different business. I believe Romito's used to be in the center, that was a bank beforehand. So what we have to look at is the building, the structure as it is, and does that meet all the expectations that the town wants? Thank you.
Congratulations on your recent election, Mr. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, hearing no other interested parties on this, now do I hear a motion to continue the hearing?
So moved to the second meeting in August.
Do I have a second on that? Okay, make a motion, split second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do you know the date of that, Connie?
I do.
Okay, thank you.
It is August 22nd, I believe.
Thank you for the time, but yeah, I appreciate it.
At 6:00 P.M.?
I think it may be the 20th, because.
August 22nd, 6:00 P.M.
22nd, first. Oh, yeah, I didn't mean to follow you all, I have now three answers.
I'm so sorry. My, excuse me, public hearing date, August 20th.
August 1st.
August 20th, thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Hopefully, we'll have everything addressed and resolved by then, you can make your decision. Okay.
Have a nice evening.
Mr. Richards, item five and six. Okay, special permit, 2019-04, takeout restaurant for North Main Street. Request by applicant for a special permit for a takeout, carryout restaurant at 192 North Main Street. Accessor's parcel ID, 25-3-4, located on 4,832 square foot plus or minus site in the business zoning district. The applicant is Vincenzo Amore, 20 Rowlands Drive, East Lung Metal, Mass. It's continued from April 16th, and also from May 21st, and from June 18th. I'll also read item number six, 2019-06, takeout restaurant for North Main Street. Request by applicant for site plan for takeout review of 192 South Main Street. Accessor's parcel ID, 25-3-4, located at 4,832 square feet, plus or minus, zoning district, owner Vincenzo Amore, exactly the same as I just read. Okay, that's it, five and six.
Sir. Good evening, gentlemen. Good evening, ladies. My name is Larry Levine. I'm the attorney for Vincenzo Amore, who's applied to you for a site plan review, as well as special permit, 192 North Main Street. First of all, I want to thank you. I know it's a pleasure being back in front of you, but thank you for the continuation. I was retained by Mr. Amore just before the June meeting, and like a relief pitcher, I didn't have time to warm up. So thank you again. I did, Mr. Amore is here with me, as well as Mr. Ray Herview, his consultant, who probably will be asked by me to help you get to that point. I did take the opportunity to watch the previous meetings on this issue, and hopefully we will address each of those issues that I saw were raised. One of the issues was the question of ingress and egress, and the question became about a common driveway between Mr. Amore and the neighbor, who is Vonda Vernatches.
Is that the pronoun, sir?
Yes. We have prepared, and Ms. Vonda has executed a common driveway agreement, which you should have copies of. And then upon the town's attorney's request, Vonda also executed an affidavit attesting to the fact that she was aware of the applications before you, and not only was aware, but supported the applications. The common driveway agreement will be recorded at the registry of deeds. So there is no need, I, I heard some concerns about vehicles, delivery trucks, having to back up into North Main Street, which was, I would have a concern with that. So now it's available with entry of all vehicles from North Main and exit onto North Main in that circle. The next issue that was raised was regarding number of parking spaces and handicap spaces. And Mr. Herview has met with the building commissioner, and I think Connie was involved either directly or indirectly, and it's been determined that for the first floor, the building commissioner is considering this a retail establishment rather than a restaurant, because there are no tables, it's takeout only. And as a result, is requiring for the first floor, four parking spaces. And the.
That's great, okay.
And the upstairs, which is a residence occupied by Mr. Amore's mother, is a residence that requires one parking space. And as the new plan, which I sent in today, you can see that in the rear of the establishment, there are five designated spaces. The handicap issue is a strange one. The Code of Massachusetts regulations and through the Architectural Access Board requires one handicap space, but only for facilities that have between 15 and 25 spaces. So based on that, Massachusetts law for this establishment would not require a handicap space at all. However, our zoning bylaws require that we abide by ADA rules. And under ADA rules, we would be required, once we have at least one other space, to have at least one handicap space. And we've placed that, as you can see, in the front of the establishment, and it's van accessible as well. You can also see from the plan that we have the handicap ramp in front, and that the entrance for handicap parking will be in the front. The new entryway in the rear for people picking up their deliveries, as you can see. There is an existing entryway on the entry driveway, that will be only used by employees. It will have a lock on it, so the public will not be entering that because it's dangerous. The other issue I saw of concern was whether a traffic study was needed. We believe it doesn't necessitate or require a traffic study. We think that the amount of residual traffic remaining in there will be minimal. We have priced out a traffic study, it's quite expensive, and I don't know that the expense, the need justifies that expense. Mr. Amore is in a business to keep his customers satisfied and happy. If we have a parking lot full of cars that are not being properly serviced, I know I would hesitate to go back to that establishment. He's a businessman, he wants to keep everyone happy, in which case, most of the orders will come in via phone or email. And in fact, we've discussed this about people actually paying for their orders when they submit them. So the amount of time spent to pick up the orders is minimal at best. If the conditions arise that, in fact, we have to make other arrangements, options are that we can meet the people coming in and give them their orders. So we hopefully would request that you grant that waiver of the traffic study. Looking, and I've been to the site many times now, and I applaud Mr. Amore for what he's bringing to town. I think it's a benefit to the town. I think that he's concerned about all the issues you raised. I think that he wants to accommodate his customers and also make sure that it runs smoothly. So I leave it in your good hands, we're here to answer questions.
Before I open it to the public, to any members, John?
Will there be, I know it's other restaurants, will there be any delivery or a delivery service like a new breed, or is it just everybody comes there to pick it up?
Yeah, just come, pick it up, yeah. Kind of like your order paid for, they come in, or like you said, give it to. Like 99 doesn't go outside and go in. So I want it to move fast.
Anyone else before I open it to the public?
No, I could.
Through the chair, so at the previous meeting, board member Torch recused himself. So for the record, you just want to clarify that the recusal was because the attorney representing the applicant.
Had a previous. Had previous financial connections, done legal work for her family.
So now you're stepping back in because you have no conflict of interest or.
Correct. Yeah.
So this is a public hearing, so I'd like to open it to the public. If there are anybody in the audience who wishes to address this issue, please step forward. Sir?
Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. As you know, former planning board member. If the zoning enforcement officers declared this a retail establishment, retail establishments aren't under special permit, restaurants are. So if this is a retail establishment, then there is no need for a special permit.
Would you like to address that, sir?
Yes, sir. Ray, correct me if I'm wrong, he considers it a restaurant for zoning purposes, however, for parking purposes, because it's takeout only, he considers the parking function to be under retail. So restaurant, even, and in the way the recently revised definition is, takeout requires special permit. The parking, because there are no tables and seats, he decided he wanted to go with retail, and that's what, six per 1,000 square feet.
So Connie, do we, do we have that opinion from the building commissioner, so now that you were writing?
I am looking through my files. I, I do know we had this conversation. We had discussed the parking situation. I have the request for, excuse me, I have the application for zoning determination where the building commissioner cited 7.41 site plan, 3.077 restaurant special permit, and 7.2 special permit. So clearly, he was indicating that under his zoning review, administrative review, that these steps were necessary. And again, we'll separate the parking calculation. There was some question, we didn't have a parking calculation for retail restaurants, so we had to use something.
Right. Anyone else in the audience wishes to address the board on this issue? Hearing none, I'd like to have a motion to close the public hearing. So moved by the second. So the motion, second to close the public hearing, so all in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay, so that passes. Discussion among the board?
I'd like to make a motion to waive the traffic study.
Do we have a second to that? I'll circulate. So we have a motion.
Well, wait, wait one second, just for, let me think about this for a minute.
Well, can we have the motion seconded and then open it to discussion?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. So the motion made, it's been seconded, so now I'll open it for discussion.
I'm mixed on this. That we only have six parking spaces, you got one handicap out, or five parking spaces, one handicap out front, six total. I envisioned something like Freego's, where you, at new time, you've got 20 cars there in a line that takes forever to get through, and I understand all the meals are going to be already bagged and ready to go, you basically hand the credit card, hand the bag, and off they go, and, and so forth. But I'm just, the reason why I'm mixed on this is because if these guys hit it out of the ballpark, which I hope they do, I, I don't, I don't know if we have enough parking, I mean, but I also don't know what changes are going to be made anyways, even if we did do a traffic study. So I'm mixed on that.
So I was initially, had issues with the parking in front of the building. However, as you know, I live fairly close to there, and I, so I walked, I took my car, drove to the end of Dewey Street, came out Dewey Street, and looked to the left. And unfortunately, there's been prior site plan approvals, so the building where now the tattoo shop is allows parking in front. Coughlin's has parking to the sidewalk, and Vonda has parking in front of her building. And there's a sign that is, I believe, perpendicular.
The gentleman's hair.
Gentleman's hair, so you can't even see the front of that building from Dewey. So I think it kind of persuaded me that I shouldn't have an issue then with the parking in front because of. because of the, because you can't even see down to that location. So that kind of, you know, made me feel that there wasn't being an issue for just adding one parking spot when you can't even see down there in that far. You know, I'm someone who frequents Freegos fairly often. And if they had the same model, there maybe wouldn't be as many cars, you know, congested at noon time.
So to make, long story short, I, even though I'm really torn about this, I can't see what a parking, how a traffic study would do. Because it can be done, there can be recommendations. You don't even have enough land to do anything, to make any changes. So the only thing a traffic study is going to say is, you can't, you don't have enough land to make any changes, so be it. Or don't go forward with the business. And that's not, you know, I mean, we don't have the right to say, no, we can't go forward with the business. He's owned properly to do what he wants to do. So I guess I'm voicing my concern, but unfortunately, it can't go anywhere. And that's frustrating for me.
But it's going to be a lot quicker than Freegos because it's just--
Well, I hope it is. But that's my issue. You know, if you go back a year from now and, you know, do a traffic study then after you had years with it, you know, business, fine. But that doesn't work either. Because, and there's not a bank in the world that's going to finance him if the planning board go back and do a traffic study a year later and re-advent that idea of the guy's business. So that won't work. So I don't like it, but I'm going to go with it.
Mr. Chair, I move to waive it because I think the number of vehicles in there any one time were so low. And we're talking about North Main Street. Okay, the impact of this business on the traffic on North Main Street is going to be absolutely minimal. And I drive through there twice a day, three times a day. And it's not as bad as people say on that side of North Main Street because you can make the left turn in and out of that property or Coughlin's or those businesses, okay? Without any real difficulty because you've got the traffic light there, which holds traffic back. And you look at the number of vehicle trips coming in and out of Meadow Place versus this place, it's absolutely minimal. So I don't think that this would have an effect on traffic on North Main Street, which is why I think for a small business like this, I would like to waive it.
So we do have a motion. And it's been seconded to waive the requirement for traffic study. So if we're ready to vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So it passes. So with respect to the special permit, so what, how would you feel about putting hours restrictions into, that so, nothing after 10 o'clock?
Yeah, we're, hours operation, Friday night is going to be open Sundays and Mondays. Hours operation probably 11 till 7:00. So I'm not hoping.
So you're fighting with us putting hours of restriction from 11 to? 11 to what?
I would suggest a little bit later than 7:00.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I'm hoping here, I don't exactly, but yeah, later.
Does the board have a pleasure if we suggested 9 o'clock?
I'd be okay with 9 o'clock.
I would very intricate with that.
I don't like working that many hours anymore. Best hours.
You don't have to stay open that late.
No, no.
There are some, yeah, there are some retail established directly, you know, in that area. So, okay, all right.
Currently, I'm not even opening up late, so.
So do I have a motion to approve the special permit with the condition that the hours of operation be 11 a.m. and not to exceed 9 p.m.?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So the motion's been seconded. So all in favor, say. Do I have anything you want to say before I?
So this whole, the determination, like with the zone, that's, is there any precedent for that? Or is this the first time we're doing something where it was considered a restaurant in one sort of circumstance and a retail in another? I just, that's, that's okay?
Well, don't forget, it's only called a retail because he's selling food at a retail price. He's not wholesaling, he's not--
That's okay.
According to our code enforcement officer, it is--
The only difference is his food is hot because of period two, stopper shops food being cold.
You don't have, in your zoning bylaws, you don't have parking requirements for takeout only. That's the dilemma. So that might be a discussion for you in the future.
So we have a motion, it's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. So it passes.
Keep those ladies that registered just moving, moving, moving because we don't want those cars backing up.
Second.
Me neither.
They get those bags all ready to go.
I make a motion to approve the site plan for this project.
Do I have a second? So a motion that's been seconded to approve the site plan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, ladies.
Thank you for answering our questions. Mr. Clerk, next item, please.
Okay, number seven. Site plan 2019-09 Massage Therapist Facility. Request by applicant for special permit for massage therapist facility at 200 North Main Street, Suite 17, AKA Suite 7, Assessor's Parcel ID 25-4-7, and 1,419 square feet plus or minus of an area consisting of 4,297 square feet plus or minus. Structure located in building zoning district. Applicant is Stacy Duquette, 8 Ripley Street, Wolverhampton, Mass.
Hi there.
There's a crowd back there.
Hello.
Hi.
So tell us what you're about to do, or want to do.
I am a self-employed massage therapist specializing in orthopedic manual therapy. And I've had a home office for the past 10 years. And I'm wishing to relocate to East Long Meadow in a suite of offices that is part of the lawless practice. So I am supplementing one space within that suite. I also brought, this wasn't requested for the special permit, but I've obtained my establishment license from the state.
Actually, we have that.
Oh, I think you just have my--
Will you give me your card?
My license. And this is an establishment license from the state of Massachusetts.
Oh, thank you.
So it's required by the state that either if you're a single therapist or an unemployed other therapist, that the state comes and inspects the location. And then they issue you the establishment license.
Board have any questions?
Which office are you locating this within?
It is, there was a question on the suite number. So right now, it's Suite 17. It was another number before. So it's in the south building at 200 North Main Street. It's the corner office, all the way down on the end. And there's one, two, there's five offices within that suite. And so I'm occupying one.
Connie?
So through the chair, is, are you occupying this whole space?
Oh, no, no, not the whole space. I'll show you.
So because we had Unit 17 and Unit 7, and in doing our due diligence, it's Unit 7 under the Assessor's card.
Right.
But so could you just, because the square footage, we had a couple of questions.
This square footage, I think, is on that establishment license. And I am, right here, Barbara has my name.
You're in that small, just that small space?
Just that space.
Oh. Okay. It says Suite 17, but it-- Okay, so, let's see, is this 1,419 square feet? Because the dimensions are 11 by 12, and those numbers don't play that up.
Oh, it's just 11 by 12. It's just a normal office suite, a small office space.
Okay. Okay, thank you so much.
Any other board members have a question? Do I hear a motion?
So moved to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So the motion has been seconded. All in favor? Excuse me, oh, I forgot something.
It is a public hearing.
It is a public hearing, so you're right.
We haven't closed it yet, you're right.
You're right. So I went one step forward. So it is open to the public. So is anyone here who wishes to address this issue? You have to come forward now.
Wish you good luck. Ralph Page, 306 Prospect Street. I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Is anyone else who wishes to address the board on this public hearing?
Mrs. Richards would like to wish you good luck.
I just need a massage.
Then you better wish her good luck. Where are you going, Connie?
So there's a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
So a motion made, second to close the public hearing. All in favor, closing the public hearing, say aye. Now back to, do I have a motion to approve the special permit?
So moved.
Do I have a second? Okay, so we have a motion to approve the special permit. It's been seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Give your call when the special permit decision is ready. Okay, within 14 days.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Item eight. A and R, 2019-06-65 Pease Road. Request by applicant for endorsement of a plan believed not to be required subdivision approval under subdivision control laws merger. Assessor's parcel ID 67-5-0 and 67-6-4 to combine parcel consisting of 2.472 plus or minus acres located in residential A zoning district. Applicants Nicole M., Nicholas M., and Amanda K. Amen. 65 Pease Road, East Long Meadow, Mass.
Now Brian Smith Associates. He just explained exactly what we're here for. And it's just a matter of combining two separate parcels into one.
Connie, you've got an opportunity to review this.
I have, thank you, sir.
You have any questions?
No, simplest plan that you can endorse. It's a lot line abandonment in order to combine two lots. And I have no reservations or comments.
Any comments from the board?
No.
Hearing none. So the--
Public hearing.
Oh, excuse me. So this is a public hearing and open to the public. Anyone in the audience have any questions on this? Is it public? I think so. Yes, let's, I think so.
Ralph, do you want to wish him good luck with this A and R?
So do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
So a motion has been seconded to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Class dismissed.
I'll have your decision for you probably tomorrow. And keep it up.
Thank you all very much. You reached the end. My, Mr. Chairman. I have site plan reviews. Public hearing. Thank you very much.
You are welcome.
So there are a couple of other things. So Connie, I don't know if you, do you want to address the letter from Rob Leveque of June 19 regarding Maple Street Fairview Extended Care Services?
I think, did they step out of the hall?
Excuse me, Don is-- Don, can you ask him?
Rob Leveque.
Rob Leveque is still there?
Yeah, he's here.
So you're going to take item 13 out of order?
13, where are you at?
This is what I have. I'm done at 8:00.
Yeah, we'll take it up.
We were about ready to end the meeting. This is the end of the agenda.
We'll take it out of order.
Look, they have that time back when you're still here.
We've got a long ways to go.
You want to call it?
Okay, endorsement of subdivision plans, review of performance guarantee and other documents. Case?
No.
We're at number nine, right?
No, this is--
13?
13.
Request by Fairfield Extended Care Services to discuss proposed modifications to special permit 2017-03.
So we, I'd like to get a motion to take this out of order.
I'll make a motion to take it out.
Second. So a motion is seconded to take item 13 out of order. All in favor, say aye. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you taking this out of order. And I will be brief to try to move things along for you. What I'm showing you is the, generally, the site plan that was approved for the new skilled nursing facility. This is the old facility here. This is the new. Mr. Crowley, the proponent on the Long Meadow side, this is the Long Meadow line right here, the proponent on the Long Meadow side, would like to change his site plan a little bit on the Long Meadow side. And he's worked out with the owner of the skilled nursing facility to put a stormwater base in here instead of just over here on his site. I have another plan, I'll show you. But I just wanted to show you this for reference. So this is the overall, this is Long Meadow line here. This is Maple Street. It would be in the very back corner, right about here. We've gone to both the Conservation Commission in East Long Meadow as well as the Conservation Commission in Long Meadow. Long Meadow has approved. East Long Meadow had no objection and informal. They told us to come in with a filing, which we have done. And we believe we'll be there, I think, the next meeting. I'm not sure what the date is.
So before you leave there, so you show me Maple Street again.
Maple Street's right here.
So where would be the, where's the intersection? Dwight?
Right about--
Okay, right there. Here, okay. So the--
You don't have a location.
So the new retention basin is closer to Fenway?
No, no, no. This is over Long Meadow, East Long Meadow, like Commerce Street? Yeah, so this will be a little more helpful. So the new, so there was a detention basin, I think it was. There was a detention basin here. And what Mr. Crowley was looking to do is kind of expand the parking a little bit here. That will allow him to do medical on both stories instead of just office and medical. He had a little division there. This is an isolated wetland here. What we're looking to do is relocate the basin in this shape. And I'll show you on the other plan. That's the location, yeah. Which is shown here. So, can you see that okay? I don't know if you can make out, there's some blue over here. That's the revision. So there's an area here that we're looking to expand the basin that comes on the East Long Meadow side. We would have an easement in favor of the Long Meadow side. And he would be revising the site plan associated with this building on the Long Meadow side. So that's what we're here for tonight. So in your decision that was rendered back when this project was approved, it said that any changes should come back before the board so that you could determine what the proper procedure would be. If it's not needed, we could handle, if it's not, a filing is not needed, we would be happy to handle this in the as-built. It doesn't, we're not changing any of the site-related stuff and any of the technically of the stormwater to do with this site. It's really only this to do with this parking area here, which would result in an expansion of this basin here. That's why we're here. Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board?
Let's see, this is, agreed into a special permit. In theory, we should, because special permit was issued at a hearing.
Right.
We should hold a hearing. Okay, in my opinion. Simply so that the special permit is properly amended and properly recorded so that 10 years from now, people are going, what's that doing there? It's my opinion. Do you agree?
All right, so we have a motion. Well, let's just, let's open the hearing.
No, we don't have a hearing. We have to schedule it.
Oh, that's right, you haven't scheduled it, yeah, okay.
This is just a dialogue with the planning board.
We're just kind of following the conditions that said, come in.
And the chair-- And the chair, I would suggest that, as usual, we should not consider the change until conservation has approved it, because if they don't approve it, then that's screw one.
We won't submit anything until we have conservation.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it. We'll proceed as directed.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Okay, number nine. Endorsement of subdivision plans, review of performance guidance, guarantee and other documents, case S D dash D, two thousand nineteen oh one, Jeffrey Lane South, request by applicant for endorsement of definitive subdivision plans and acceptance of other documents for two lot subdivisions on three point four four plus or minus acre parcel at two sixteen Summers Road, assessor's parcel ID forty dash twenty-five dash thirty-one, located residential A zoning district. Applicant is Val Chev's Oak Ridge Custom Home Builders, eighty River Road, South Hadley.
So if I may, through the chair, the documents have several typos on them, I would suggest that the planning board go ahead and endorse the plans, but I will hold them hostage until I receive the corrected documents, and then he can take this to the conservation, pardon it, him to come to Registry of Deeds to report. There is one typo on the surface of the plan under general construction notes where it refers to the town as a city planner and planning division, we don't have that, I wish I had more staff, I mean, but unfortunately, we're, duh. But we can correct that typo ourselves, just with a little note. But if, if it pleases the board, and I think it would please the applicant to know that the, the plans have been endorsed and he would work with diligence to complete the covenant, make sure that the bond is in order, because he's used a form that we don't use as our boilerplate form, and the easement, he had omitted some information in the easement boilerplate that I would like him to complete, as well as dates.
Still pleasure of the board.
I agree with the director's suggestion.
So do we have a motion to endorse? Move to endorse, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion has been seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Discussion with the Health Department in lieu of account for sidewalk requirements for new developments in town subdivision regulations.
The Health Department.
Okay, so there's been discussion, much discussion about in lieu funding for sidewalk construction, and I don't see anybody from the Health Department here, but they did provide a letter stating that they would like to be involved if you need assistance in drafting, creating the bylaw, to create this in lieu account, and they were lending support for the creation of, of an in lieu account, simply because we do have a sidewalk master plan, unfortunately, there's minimal funding available, so what we're trying to do through the in lieu account is, if a developer of a subdivision feels that the sidewalks wouldn't benefit the greater public good, they could dedicate the, the, the fund, excuse me, the costs that are arrived at through the DPW's calculation toward, to deposit in this in lieu account.
Do you know whether the town set aside any funds this year to the sidewalk fund?
I do not know off the top of my head, I think there was a request, and we, because we don't, there was some confusion as to if we actually have an in lieu sidewalk account already established.
No, I know the Capital Planning Committee used to recommend money every year to go into the sidewalk fund, I don't know if the Town Council has continued that or not, but...
You just got elected.
Okay. I'm sorry, no, go ahead.
No, you, you decide.
No, I was going to say, some very smart people that used to be on the Appropriations Committee used to put money aside every year for the sidewalk fund, and they would build it up and then do like a mile or two at a, at a time, and so it would be nice if this could be added to that account, whatever it might be, so. But we do also have a letter from DPW Superintendent, or Deputy Superintendent Tom Christiansen, copied on Bruce Feeny, the DPW Superintendent supporting this proposal as well. I've asked Connie to reach out to Gordon Smith, the Superintendent of Schools, to get his thoughts on that as well, because one of the original thoughts were, you did the sidewalks, that would reduce the need for additional busing, so the kids could walk to a school, so I thought it'd be appropriate to get the schools' thoughts on this as well.
And I did send an email to the superintendent, he is on vacation and won't be back until after this meeting, I'm sure he will provide comment. We do have some verbiage from the town of East Windsor, Connecticut, that we might be able to borrow for crafting the, the bylaw, which would fall under the subdivision regulations, so we would be able to do our subdivision regulations. And that says fee in lieu of installation alternat, altern, alternate?
Alternative.
Alternatively, the applicant may propose and the commission may accept that some or all of this requirement shall be met by making a payment of a fee in lieu of installing sidewalks or trails to a town sidewalk and trail fund provided that such payment is at least forty percent of the estimated cost of installing sidewalks in that department. We, of course, would use the DPW provides as a cost estimate, you always get with your estimate for surety a cost for the sidewalk construction, so they calculate that with the cost estimate, so it's nothing that would come after, applicant would know right away, there would be no, well, you know, all of the, the, the fee amount would be disclosed upfront.
So what would be your timetable for drafting something for our review?
When would you like this?
First meeting in August? That's, what, what's the time you're talking about?
Well, the first meeting in August is...
The National Night Out. We're going to discuss, not really, meeting.
Oh, okay, fine.
You're going to do meet group?
Meet group, yeah, fine, we did last year, yeah.
But the August twentieth meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
Chair, do we know if the Finance Director has commented on this? Because that was the person who would have to actually set up and maintain the in lieu account. And I wouldn't want to pass something and have the Finance Director say, oh no, this is too complicated, or whatever.
The chair will definitely have a conversation with Sarah Menard, she is also in support, and again, we are a, a town hall that communicates with great frequency, we, we share all of our thoughts and concerns interdepartmentally, and I'm sure Sarah would also be delighted to create that account and let you know.
Sure, okay. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Preliminary discussion amending the rules and regulations for submission of petitions and plans to help subdivisions for town of East Long Meadow, Massachusetts to include the establishment of an in lieu of sidewalk construction fund, which is a little different than what I just read.
So we had this discussion, Ryan Quinby asked that we...
It's still sidewalks, yeah.
I think we rolled everything into one.
Yeah, I think you did it.
Except for item twelve.
Yeah, I did write it because we had another, had another item. Number twelve, preliminary discussion for amending the rules and regulations for submission of petitions and plans for subdivision for town of East Long Meadow to include installation of conduit for infrastructure as requested by Director of IT Department.
I'll let you roll with this, Connie.
So if I may elaborate, because there was a little confusion at the last meeting in regard to the conduit, so when the cable company is preparing to provide cable service, broadband service, to residential structures, they ideally should be running that cable, that fiber optic cable through a conduit to protect it from the dirt and the water and any type of underground damage. Some cable companies choose to just place that fiber optic cable in the ground without any protection. We would like to see reassurance through our subdivision regulations that conduit be placed. This would also mitigate any later opportunity to have to, to dig our sidewalks, or to, to deimage any sidewalk that might be installed to, or constructed in order to install the fiber optic cable line. So the conduit's in place, you could pour concrete over it, the cable company could run the cable, fiber optic cable through the conduit, and there would be minimal disturbance on the land.
Discussion, questions?
Who would be installing the conduit, the cable company or the subdivision developer?
Well, I don't know the answer to that question, but I will find out.
Because I, I am aware that up until at least recently, our cable provider does not use conduit.
And that cable provider should be using conduit.
Well... Sir?
My understanding is that the, that the empty conduit would be run for municipal purposes.
Oh, not for just rest?
No, it wouldn't be, it wouldn't be not be for a private provider to run their service. The town has a fiber optic network that goes to several areas of town, but it's not built out throughout the town. So it's sort of truck lines that go out toward, there's one that goes out to Meadowbrook School. So this would be a provision for when they're building a street, that the empty conduit goes in just the way they put in water lines for fire hydrants, sewers. It would be another municipal access for municipal services to service that street so that it doesn't have to be dug up again, because that incurs a cost to the town once the town owns the street.
That, that makes sense, because I, I know that they, for instance, all the sewer pump stations are on fiber optic.
Correct.
Okay, so that, you know, they can monitor them from Central Point and know if something's going wrong. And we don't know what's going to be installed in a subdivision ten years from now for municipal purposes.
Correct.
Okay, whether it's a sewer pump station or something else that the town needs to monitor. And so I think that's what it's for.
But wouldn't it also provide the means to...
Well, it would, but I don't know that, then there was...
So I guess, can I just interrupt? So, you know, we're, we're kind of flying blind here, and since Mr. Quinby's the one who is requesting this, it would be appropriate that he either give us a written explanation and/or take the time to come to our board and explain it in person, so he could answer any questions that we might have, and if he wants it that bad, he would come and do that.
Would you agree? I agree. Absolutely.
Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Update, update and progress of mixed-use zone bylaw petition.
So it's been, mixed-use zoning district bylaw petition has been referred to the subcommittee by Town Council, that was done on May twenty-eighth, and they have not set a subcommittee, subcommittee meeting date at this time because the elections had occurred, there was going to be a change in appointees, delegates to this subcommittee, and we are still waiting for that date to be set for further discussion.
Is it my understanding that a former planning board chairman is now a member of that committee? Mr. Starks?
It's, he's been recommended to the committee, but I have not heard of confirmation. And likewise, the change from industrial garden park to mixed-use district is similarly going to be discussed, so we're waiting for a date.
Is there a requirement for the Town Council to act within a certain timeframe?
Yes, there is, and we're looking at a ninety-day timeframe.
As of what date?
That would be the date it was submitted, referred to the Town Council, which was five twenty-one. So they acted initially on five twenty-eight.
You have thirty more days.
Yes, so the, and I did send a reminder to the chair of the subcommittee, and I think that they're just trying to organize their schedule.
Thank you. Next item.
Discussion of open meeting law complaint submitted by Ralph Page.
Connie?
We have a letter. I believe all of you received the draft review of the letter. Quickly, we have a town attorney, and our requests for our open meeting law complaints are sent immediately to the town attorney who responds on behalf of those commissions. So there was a disconnect, it was understood that, that the town attorney would be following up, but it came to my attention early in July that Mr. Page was still waiting for a letter from the planning board. So we crafted a letter, and I have it here for your signature. I will mention that the letter will be sent to Attorney Maynard, who will then send it to the Attorney General's Office, and he will follow through on the process.
And did anyone have any concerns, you're okay with the content of the correspondence? So then, does the Attorney General's Office then respond directly to the individual who brought the open meeting complaint?
Attorney General will be responding, but I just want to confirm, so I sent a email to our attorney, and I asked for further clarification, so I said, this office will mail the signed letter to Mr. Page following the meeting and a PDF copy to you to attach to the correspondence with the AG correct. So I apologize, I will be mailing that tomorrow, but the AG will also get a copy of the letter.
So our next scheduled meeting is August sixth, which happens to be the night, or to be the night out event. Last year, Jonathan, you weren't on the committee, but we did a little meet and greet.
I was.
Oh, you were, oh, good, okay. So the planning board has a, a table at the event, and planning board members interacted with the public who had questions, and we thought that went fairly well, so I thought we'd do the exact same thing. No business will be conducted, and we'll just do that.
We will have the PowerPoint presentation of the mixed-use, pardon me, the master plan, information, and I do hope to have the three members of the subcommittee present, where you will meet them, and we will begin discussion of the drafting of the updates to the master plan. So it is my hope that during your work session meetings, the board, as well as the three subcommittee members, will...